Ryan, are we ready to go?
Yes, we are recording and we are live on YouTube.
Great, so Madam Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Good morning, this is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, May 19, 2021. I will now call the role. Chealago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie. Commissioner Edie. Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Barely here. I'm here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, May 5, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduled on calendar numbers one and two, we have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, June 9, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
On the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page four.
Madam Secretary, before you take the votes, we just want to note that Commissioner Edie is present today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Okay. Reports, Borough of the Bronx, calendar number three and four. CD six, calendar number three, seat 10063, CMX. Calendar number four, N210062, ZRX. In the matter of application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning St. Joseph's, 1949 Backgate Avenue rezoning, for favorable reports on calendar numbers three and four. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner, okay. Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers three and four. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number five, CD one, C200251ZSM. In the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 42 Walker Street. For a favorable report on calendar number five. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number five. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number six, concerning 1427 Ralph Avenue, this item has been withdrawn. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number seven, CD three, C210221PCR. In the matter of an application for the site selection and acquisition of property concerning Crescent Beach Park expansion. For a favorable report on calendar number seven. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number seven. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers eight through 11. CD two, calendar number eight, N210206ZAR. Calendar number nine, N210207ZAR. Calendar number 10, N210209ZAR. Calendar number 11, N210208ZCR. In the matter of application for the grant of authorization and certification concerning Shields Estates for adoption on calendar numbers eight through 11. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers eight through 11. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 12, CD three, N210205RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 7558 Amboy Road for adoption on calendar number 12. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
Calendar number 12 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 13, CD two, N210269ZCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning Staten Island Academy for adoption on calendar number 13. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
Calendar number 13 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 14, CD three, N210331RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 239 Vernon Avenue for adoption on calendar number 14. Chealago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Ahmad?
Yeah.
Bernie? I don't have one.
No?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli, okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachak.
Yes.
Calendar number 14 has been adopted.
And Madam Secretary, is there any other business before the commission?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so in that case, this remotely held public meeting is adjourned and over to you, Ryan, for a special review session.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the special review session of the New York City Planning Commission of Wednesday, May 19, 2021. The time is 10:11 a.m. and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a discussion of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District One. Alex Summers is here to discuss this project.
I'll just note that this was the last item that we considered on Monday at the end of a very long review session. And Commissioner Levin had asked a useful question and we thought it made sense since we were holding the special review session to go back and more fully answer the commissioner's question.
Good morning, commissioners. So as, as we said before, now that we are not at the end of our five-hour review session, we wanted to follow up and supplement the conclusion of the presentation for 8/24 Metropolitan Avenue. Next slide, please. As you recall, this was an application to rezone a CA2 district to an R7A C24 district and a text amendment to map MIH option two. Next slide. The proposed rezoning extends an existing R7A along Bushwick Avenue across the southeastern corner of the CA2, picking up two zoning lots. Next slide. So for some of the thinking about this from the applicant team, the project area sits at the crossroads of five streets and in a regular street grid. It's distinguished by wide streets, DOT and DPR plazas and parks and is one block from the Graham Avenue L Station, which provides access to Union Square in about 10 to 15 minutes by subway. CA2 districts do not allow residential uses and the surrounding area only has voluntary inclusionary housing mapped along some of the R7A corridors. Next slide, please. The current zoning districts match the complexity of the street grid here. R7A with VIH is mapped along portions of Bushwick Avenue and Metropolitan Avenue, while a combination of R6B and R6A districts are mapped along portions of the neighborhood blocks. The applicant's development site here is marked in red and you can see it's partially split by the CA2 district and R6BC24 district. To facilitate a mixed-use residential and commercial development at this location, the applicants have proposed to map their site with an R7A C24. Next slide, please. To avoid concerns regarding spot zoning, the applicants have proposed to extend the existing R7A zoning district along Bushwick Avenue up and over their site along Metropolitan. This does result in picking up the non-applicant-controlled site, an existing gas station. In discussing the appropriateness of their proposed boundaries with the department, we didn't believe it would be suitable to map an R7A at this location without connecting the map change to the existing R7A zoning district along Bushwick Avenue. So that, that is just trying to summarize our thought process behind this when, when talking about the zoning district boundary and so happy to take any more questions about that at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Well, since I raised the question, I just want to thank you for that. And certainly, I certainly see, first off, I understand that this intersection is appropriate for this kind of a zoning. My concern was primarily about the effect on the gas station and income, you know, making that site then, which is more than half of the area proposed to be rezoned, making that a non-conforming use and requiring the property owner then to have to go to BSA in the future if they somehow lost their non-conforming status and what that would do to their, how that would complicate their ownership of this parcel. You know, maybe they propose to redevelop eventually anyway, so this suits them just fine. But if we put that property owner in a situation where they have difficulty with financing or, you know, some other challenges on account of we just made it a non-conforming use, that is something we should understand as we move through this application. But anyway, thanks for the follow-up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marin.
Thank you, Chair. I happen to agree with all the comments that Commissioner Levin has made. And I would wonder why, well, there are a couple of things that happen. One is that she's absolutely correct, they're out of conformance in terms of zoning. Second thing is that the building that's being proposed now has lot line windows, which Commissioner Levin also brought up on Monday, which then becomes an issue should this site decide they want to build. And I would posit, why not make it R6B to continue the R6B that's coming from the right-hand side? I don't know if that's left. I'm going to assume west in that instance, it's coming west. Why not make it an R6B where then it would fit in with the rest of that zoning that aligns? And then we don't have to worry about the, oh, you're right, because then it becomes spot zoning. I answered my own question. I see what, I see what's going on. Thank you.
I can, I can try and speak to the two other points, though. It is, and I want to let the applicant team speak to their design, which involves the lot line windows. But it was our understanding that they were not legal windows along the lot line. They were using DOB regs to allow for some openings, which are allowed some, a small percentage for each floor. But again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to defend the applicant's design and can let them speak to that. On the R6B, that was one of the discussed zoning district boundary changes about extending it west along, along Metropolitan. And in discussion with the applicant team, there was a very small net increase in the allowable residential floor area for the zoning lot. And in combination with a ground floor non-residential, I think it was in the, it was under the MIH threshold for triggering MIH. And I'll double-check with that, obviously, but that was, that was one of the considerations. And then the third, and again, the applicant can speak to this, the, the higher density at this location, given the wide streets and transit access and being a, you know, an active retail commercial corridor, we thought there could be a case made for a higher density than, than R6B as well.
Understood, and I like, thank you for that, because that, that explanation does help. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? Okay, as this application was already certified, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
The second item on the agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Six. Our presenter is Jonah Rogoff.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is an application by PAB Third Avenue Holdings LLC for zoning map amendment from M21 to a C4-4A district and a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area or MIH area in order to facilitate a new five-story commercial building and, and six-story commercial enlargements in the Gowanus neighborhood of Brooklyn within Community District Six. Next slide, please. The surrounding area contains a mix of industrial, commercial and residential uses. The area west of Third Avenue consists of one- and two-story warehouse-style buildings with light manufacturing, construction, storage and distribution-based uses. Most of these industrial uses are concentrated in the southwest Brooklyn industrial business zone or IPZ, located just to the west of the project area. Third Avenue, an 80-foot-wide corridor running north-south, contains three-to-six-story mixed-use buildings with ground floor, commercial and residential above, as well as single-story auto repair and service-based uses. The area further to the east between Third and Fourth Avenues is predominantly residential and characterized by three-to-four-story rowhouse-style homes and walk-up apartments. Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue, a 120-foot-wide corridor to the west, to the east, serve as local commercial thoroughfares. The area is well-served by public transit with access to the FG and R lines less than a quarter mile from the project area at the Fourth Avenue and Ninth Street subway station. Two bus routes also run along Third Avenue, providing access to downtown Brooklyn and other neighborhoods in Brooklyn. Next slide, please. The area west of Third Avenue extending to the, to the Gowanus Canal is Zoned M21, a manufacturing district that permits industrial and commercial uses up to an FAR of two. M21 allows base heights up to 60 feet with additional building height governed by the sky exposure plane. Accessory off-street parking is generally required to be one space for every 300 square feet of commercial and then one space for every 1,000 square feet of industrial. A portion of the, the east side of Third Avenue is Zoned M12, which has similar use and bulk regulations as M21, while allowing certain community facilities and requiring higher performance standards for manufacturing use. Most of the east side of Third Avenue is mapped with an R6A district with a commercial overlay, while the mid-blocks between Third and Fourth Avenues are Zoned R6B, both of which were mapped as part of the department-sponsored park slope rezoning in 2003, mainly in effort to maintain the neighborhood character. Next slide. And just to illustrate the project area and its context, this is a bird's eye view looking northwest with the project area in a dotted blue line and the development sites shaded and outlined in red. The project area encompasses two block frontages on the west side of Third Avenue between 11th and 12th Streets. Amidst the industrial uses to the west of the project area is Ennis Playground, a DPR, approximately half-acre park that was recently reconstructed. You can also view the elevated subway viaduct further in the background where the FNG lines run. Among the project area's 18 full and partial tax lots, the non-applicant-owned lots primarily contain three-story mixed-use buildings with ground floor retail and residential above. The applicant proposes development on two separate sites. First, a 4,800-square-foot lot occupied by a one-story former fuel storage building between 11th and 12th Streets with frontage on Third Avenue. Second site is a 9,911-square-foot, a regular T-shaped lot between 12th and 13th Streets with frontages on all three streets. Within the second site, the portion along 12th and 13th Streets each contain warehouse-style buildings used for storage and offices, while the portion fronting Third Avenue is improved with a five-story building that was developed in 2007 by the applicant and contains offices and other commercial businesses. Here, I'd just like to note that the applicant, in addition to owning these two properties, owns several more nearby, particularly within the Gowanus portion of the IPZ, with a track record of developing and leasing space for both industrial and commercial tenants. Next slide. And just to quickly highlight the project area and development sites. On the northern block 1020, between 11th and 12th Street, the project area would cover 10 full and partial tax lots with the first development site on Lot 36 outlined in red. Next slide. And then on the southern block 1026, between 12th and 13th Streets, the project area would cover eight tax lots with the second development site located on the T-shaped Lot 32, a small portion of which would lie outside of the project area. Next slide. And now just a few photos to walk through the project area. The top-left photo is a view of the Third Avenue corridor facing southwest from 11th Street with a new six-story building visible at the corner of 12th Street. It's a residential building. The top-right photo is a view of 11th Street looking west from Third Avenue with the project area on the left side. And then the bottom-left photo is a view of the first site improved with a single-story former fuel storage building. Next slide. And in the second set of photos above, the top-left is a view showing the full Third Avenue frontage between 11th and 12th Streets. The top-right photo is a view of the, of 12th Street facing northwest from Third Avenue. And then on the bottom-left is a view of the Third Avenue corridor facing northeast from 13th Street. On the right side of this view, within the, the M12 area across the street from the project area, there is a new brewery, co-working and studio space, as well as a greenhouse under construction, which just as a side note, represented the first chair certification application approved to better accommodate space for a greenhouse facility. Next slide. And finally, a third set of photos, the top-left is a view of the Third Avenue frontage between 12th and 13th Streets, where you can see the existing five-story commercial building located in a portion of Site 2, shown in the center. The top-right photo shows 13th Street facing northwest from Third Avenue, where you can see a multi-story industrial building in the background. And then on the bottom-left is a view of 13th Street facing northeast with the yellow brick building on the left side, which represents a portion of Site 2 with frontage on 13th Street. Next slide. So with the first development site located at 506 Third Avenue on Block 1020, Lot 36, the applicant proposes to develop a new five-story commercial building containing 18,000 square feet or 3.75 FAR with a mix of retail and office space uses. The building would rise to a height of 68 feet without a setback and with no parking, primarily due to the site waiving out of the required off-street parking. Next slide. And then at the second site located at 135 13th Street and 138 12th Street on Block 1026, Lot 32, the applicant proposes to first maintain the existing building, grade out and locate it at 530 Third Avenue, and then on the side-street portions of the zoning lot, construct 21,800 square feet of enlargements and development, which would result in two new, two six-story buildings with a mix of retail and office uses, each rising to a height of 75 feet without a setback and no parking. In total, the entire lot would contain approximately 40,000 square feet of commercial space or for FAR. Next slide. And just an elevation perspective, showing the proposed developments on the portions of the second site on 12th and 13th Streets. Next slide. To facilitate the proposed developments, the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area. Next slide. First, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment from M21 to a C44A district, which would encompass two block frontages on the west side of Third Avenue and extend 100 feet from the corridor. C44A is a commercial district with an R7A residential district equivalent. It allows up to four FAR for commercial and community facility uses and 4.6 FAR for residential uses within an inclusionary housing area. C44A allows base heights between 40 and 85 feet with a qualifying ground floor, after which buildings must setback either 10 feet on a wide street or 15 feet on a narrow street. Building heights may then rise to a maximum of 95 feet with a qualifying ground floor. Parking is generally required for 50% of the units and optional for income-restricted units in the transit zone of which the site is located. Next slide. Second, the applicant requests a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area pursuant to options one and two. Option one requires 25% of the residential floor area be affordable housing for residents, averaging 60% of the area median income or AMI or below, with a minimum of 10% of that housing be affordable at 40% AMI. And then option two requires that 30% of the residential floor area be affordable housing for residents with average, excuse me, averaging comes 80% of the AMI or below. And then just to note, while the applicant's not proposing any residential use as part of their proposal, MIH is being mapped due to the increase in residential capacity resulting from the proposed zoning map amendment. Next slide. So for a little context, as a follow-up to the Gowanus framework released in 2018, the department, in collaboration with agency partners, local businesses and other stakeholders, facilitated a public engagement process to develop a shared vision for the southern part of Gowanus, located outside of the neighborhood plan area and within the IPZ and the adjacent Third Avenue corridor. The goal of this effort was to develop a land use framework and identify infrastructure and workforce development priorities. On Monday of this week, I'm very pleased to say that the department released a vision plan that included a land use framework that identified Third Avenue. That included a land use framework that identified Third Avenue as in an appropriate location to support moderate growth of both housing. And non residential uses. While also bringing pre existing residential use into conformance. And then also being mindful of Third Avenue as a corridor that it does experience challenges with trucks, bicyclists, pedestrians and other road users. Which was a concern that we heard from many stakeholders. Lastly, I just want to again note that the applicant as a prominent business and property owner in the area. Has been involved in this planning effort and actually heads a local nonprofit called the Gowanus Science. And that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks Jonah. Questions from commissioners?
I have a question, Chair. I'm trying to raise my hand here.
Okay, please, vice chair.
With regard to the enlargements of the second site that's going to be enlarged. Will those two buildings then be connected to the the existing building that fronts? I guess it's Third Avenue?
That's correct, Commissioner. Actually, in the briefing package, I actually have the the plans for the first and second floor. They're proposing a connection. And also a shared outdoor open area. That can be used by tenants from all of the, from all three site frontages, if that makes sense.
Can you put them up Jonah? Because I'm on my tablet as opposed to my iPad.
Yeah, so. I believe this, thank you, this side just shows the connections on the first floor, so. They're planning to build up to the rear portion, but then the following slide. Shows the outdoor amenity space, which is intended to provide connections between the buildings.
Okay, is there, is there a rendering showing the rear of a portion of the site? You know, in other words, the top of the T, how it would look from that vantage point?
We don't have a rendering directly above. We just have that the bird's eye view from the presentation. But we can, we can certainly ask the the team to to provide that helpful.
Okay. Well, this is for what certification now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we'll see it. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes, my question is about the effect that this rezoning would have on the out parcels. It's two full block fronts and the EAS indicates a scenario of potentially seven new buildings. And also says that there are currently twenty six dwelling units within the project area. I'm wondering what we know about the tendency of those dwelling units. Are they rent protected? What might their fate be with this rezoning?
Thanks, Commissioner. I think I'd like to gather all that info to prepare for pre hearing, but I would just note that we didn't find any. Initial rent regulated units. Some of the the buildings were under common ownership. So for conservative analysis purposes, we did analyze the potential for new development. But mainly for a conservative analysis of.
Of the project. I understand. Yeah, thank you. So when we come back for pre hearing, it would be good to tease out a little bit more information about who's living there and what might happen.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie?
Yeah, thank you. Jonah, when it comes back, will the architects be on the team? Because I'd kind of like to have a conversation with them about a more contemporary expression to these buildings, since they're new buildings, we might have that discussion.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I believe they are planning to attend, but I'll certainly confirm and.
Okay, thank you.
And not seeing any other raise. Oh, yes, Commissioner Prasad.
Sorry, I did it the last second. I had a, when the architects do come back, I'm just curious, are they going to have mechanical rooftop units? Because I see that, for example, on five oh six Third Avenue, they are looking to utilize the entire roof, I guess, for the tenant space. And they have a lot of landscape and I'm just curious if they're going to put units up there. And I have one other question, I believe it was slide twenty four, where you show all three first floor plans. If you can just pull that up for a minute, please, because I'm just trying to, I'm looking through our briefing packet. And it's kind of different from the first floor plan I'm looking at for five oh six Third Avenue. So I was just curious if they made any design changes.
I can. I'll check with the applicant team. I would, I would just say that five oh six third is slightly different because it's a, it's a new entirely new development where five thirty. They are proposing enlargements. And I just want to confirm by units, do you mean commercial units? They're not proposing residential?
No, I know that. The commercial, I'm just, just curious about the layout. And with regards to the rooftop, I'm talking about HVAC units. Are they going to be putting that on the roof? I'm just curious, are they going to have it in the cellar? Just, just want.
Yeah. Good question. We can, we can ask them to flesh that out. I, the, my review of the drawings, I don't recall seeing it and that's a. It's a noted omission. Yeah, we'll ask them how they're going to treat that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And with that, the application is certified.
Thank you.
Okay, the third item on our agenda is a non U L R post referral review of a city planning commission certification. In Manhattan Community District eleven. Our presenter is Scott Williamson.
Good morning, Commissioners. So this is a private application by the dust organization for a joint MTA CPC certification of the transit easement volume. The application relates to a site in the East Harlem neighborhood of Manhattan Community Board eleven. In May of twenty nineteen, the applicant obtains the initial phase one component of this joint certification from the CPC and the MTA. Which confirmed a transit easement volume would be required to be provided on the site. The applicant is now seeking phase two of that joint certification. To determine the location, dimensions and type of easement volume required, having since worked in consultation with the MTA. Obtaining this phase two joint certification is a prerequisite to the applicant obtaining a building permit. Next slide, please. The site is located at the intersection of Park Avenue and East one twenty fifth Street. The intersection is a major transit and commercial node. The elevated Harlem one twenty fifth Street Metro North Station is located immediately to the east of the site above Park Avenue. The one twenty fifth Street subway station for the Lexington Avenue line is located a block to the east on Lexington Avenue at one hundred and twenty fifth Streets. Commercial and retail uses line Park Avenue and one hundred and twenty fifth Streets. The site is zoned C four seven and which allows a mix of development with a base of ten FAR, which can be increased up to twelve FAR. Next slide, please. The site is also mapped with the special one hundred and twenty fifth Street District and the special transit land use district, which you can see here. The site, sorry, the special transit land use district was established in the zoning resolution in nineteen seventy three. In preparation for the Second Avenue subway line. Provisions of the special districts enabled MTA and CPC in conjunction to identify locations where transit easement volumes. Are required for subway related use and public access to the subway mezzanine or station. As part of the twenty seventeen East Harlem rezoning, the special transit land use district was extended along one hundred and twenty fifth Streets. Next slide, please. The development site comprises a single zoning lot with two tax lots. The first tax lot fronts onto one hundred and twenty fourth Street and is improved with a five story institutional building. Used by the New York College of Podiatric Medicine. The second lot, eighteen hundred Park Avenue is vacant at present, having previously been used by the New York College of Podiatric Medicine for open accessory parking. The applicant plans to develop the vacant portion of the zoning lot with an as of rights mixed use building. Of thirty two stories containing ground floor commercial and five hundred and twenty five residential units above. The existing building fronting one hundred and twenty fourth Street and accommodating the New York College of Podiatric Medicine would remain. Next slide, please. Phase one of the transit easement certification concluded with the MTA and the CPC requiring an easement on sites in May of twenty nineteen. This phase one determination has compelled the applicant to pursue the current phase two application. The applicant presented the proposed easement volume to the community, to Community Board eleven in June of last year. The Community Board advised it did not intend to submit comments. The MTA submitted a letter of approval for the proposed easement volume on thirty, the thirtieth of October twenty twenty. Next slide, please. The proposed transit easement volume colored here in pink on the site plan would occupy a fifty one foot length of the site's eastern Park Avenue frontage. It would have a depth of twenty eight feet and six inches. Next slide, please. The easement volume where indicated here above grounds in the darker pink shade is entirely within the future building. It would have a height of twenty nine feet above grade and it would have a depth of one hundred and forty feet below ground, which is shown in the lighter pink shades on the figure. The department understands the volume has been designed to contain stairs for maintenance and emergency egress for the future Second Avenue subway station. Next slide, please. In summary, the applicant is seeking a joint certification from the MTA and the City Planning Commission pursuant to zoning resolution ninety five zero four one. The certification would endorse the location, dimensions and type of easement volume required on the development site. The MTA has provided their approval letter as part of that joint certification. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions from the commission? Okay, not seeing any, then I will ask. For approval to send a letter to the Department of Buildings certifying that a transit easement compatible with the proposed development. Is provided by this submission. Can I see a show of hands? Thank you. We'll send the letter.
Okay. The fourth item on our agenda is a non U L R post referral review of an authorization. In Manhattan Community District five, our presenter is Anthony La Chiba.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. So this is an application that was certified on November second, two thousand and twenty. And referred to Community Board five on November sixth, two thousand and twenty, and is now returning to the CPC. So the application is brought by the owners of the Gramercy condominium located at twenty five East twenty first Street. Seeking an authorization via zoning resolution section fifteen twenty B, seeking to win the use preservation requirement set forth in fifteen twenty one. The south, the the site outlined in red on this picture is located on East twenty first Street between Broadway and Park Avenue South. Within the Ladies Mile Historic District of Manhattan Community Board five. The site is an eleven story commercial condominium with one unit per floor. The applicant's original proposal brought to you in November sought to convert the entire building from use group six office use to use group two residential use. Following the referral from the Community Board, the applicant revised their application. And are now seeking to convert floors two through eleven from office to residential. Next slide, please. The building, again outlined here in red, is located on a block bounded by East twenty first Street, East twenty second Street, Broadway and Park Avenue South. The Ladies Mile Historic District is identified by the dashed blue line and blue shading. The surrounding area is predominantly zoned M one five M in which residential use is not permitted as of right. The surrounding area contains commercial light, limited light manufacturing. And residential in a variety of mixed use buildings and loft buildings. There are actually few manufacturing uses existing still in the surrounding area. Many of the residential buildings are small scale mid block buildings typically between three and twelve stories tall with ground floor retail uses. Next slide, please. The site is an eleven story commercial condominium plus cellar constituting ten commercial condominium units. On a four thousand three hundred and forty five square foot interior lot. The building rises ten stories to one hundred and thirty three feet and then has a setback eleventh story penthouse, bringing the building height to one hundred and forty three feet. The building comprises forty thousand four hundred and ninety one zoning square feet for an FAR of nine point four two. In nineteen eighty three, the building was converted from single ownership to a series of ten individually owned commercial condominiums. Next slide, please. The applicant is asking to leave the use preservation requirement of zoning resolution section fifteen twenty one. That section will allow for the conversion of floor area to residence in existing buildings or portions thereof in M one five M districts. Subject to certification by the chairperson of the City Planning Commission. However, to receive that certification, floor area must be preserved for commercial or manufacturing uses in accordance with the provisions of that section. For a building on a lot area that's less than five thousand square feet, that preservation requirement would be thirty three point three percent. Given the requirements of fifteen twenty one and the additional requirement that whole, that a whole floor maintain a single use. This building would be required to maintain four floors of commercial space. Next slide, please. Community Board five held a public hearing and vote on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty. The board voted to approve with conditions. That vote was forty three in favor, one opposed and one abstention. The single condition voted by the board was that the applicant maintained the first floor as commercial. The applicant agreed to that request and filed an updated application on March twenty sixth of this year. Next slide, please. Following that community board condition of approval, in seeking this authorization via section fifteen twenty B. The applicants pro, propose to convert floors two through ten plus the penthouse, the effective eleventh floor. From existing use group six commercial to use group two residential. The proposed conversion will require alteration work on the building to create requisite code compliances, but the building envelope will remain unchanged. The building does contain an existing legal non compliant condition on floors six through ten, where the building meets the street line. But current zoning would require a twenty foot setback. The proposed conversion would create nine dwelling units, one per floor, except for the duplex at the tenth floor and penthouse level. So the first floor would be maintained as a four thousand two hundred and forty one square foot commercial space, maintaining slightly more than ten percent of the current commercial space. Floors two through nine would each have three thousand nine hundred and forty one square feet. And the tenth floor plus penthouse level unit would have an aggregate of five thousand one hundred and seventy two square feet. The cellar would be used for accessory storage space and for an elevator, machine room and mechanical space. Next slide, please. By virtue of the building's location within the Ladies Mile Historic District, the CPC may waive the commercial preservation requirement. Subject to the satisfaction of the conditions set forth in fifteen twenty B, which are written out in the four bullet points on the screen. The applicant has, in addition, provided a certificate of appropriateness from the LPC and a permit for approved facade work. In order to grant this authorization, the City Planning Commission shall find that such waiver shall have minimal adverse effects on the conforming uses located within the building and the surrounding area. And now I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tony. Commissioner Ortiz?
Hi, thank you, Tony. Um, yeah, I do want to raise the the question of, you know, the the community. Board sort of getting into the question of. Of. Ground floor retail requirements. You know, is this something that they're known to do? And and you know, where is the department's position on this generally? And perhaps that's not a question for you, it's just sort of writ large. Given that we do see a softening of retail demand and if this space could comfortably accommodate residential, why? Why wouldn't it want to be that? And why do we have concerns about that?
Yeah, I I think when the department had first looked at this corridor, we noted that a lot of the street is in fact residential, so felt like this conversion. Was not unjustified. Most of the buildings along the street do have first floor commercial uses. So maintaining that first floor commercial is sort of in line with the existing conditions of the street. It was all, it was a condition that was, or it was a question that was brought up when this came to the commission back in November, whether or not they would. That the commission could request that they maintain that first floor commercial. So I think the applicant was simply aware that there was, you know, the potential for. Both the commission and the community board to request this, which is why they were so quick to to agree to the condition.
I'll note that at the time of referral, when it was presented to the commission. I believe it was Commissioner Bernie who had noted that. I believe it was Commissioner Bernie who had noted that possibility of maintaining the current of the street at the street level with the residential above. Um, I see Commissioner Bernie, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, that's right. And I think, actually, I think this is a pretty good compromise that they can go residential on the upper floors and maintain the the street activity with, with retail at the base, you know, hopefully. Commissioner Ortiz's pessimism about the strength of retail won't be, won't be borne out.
I think, I think it's not, you know, it's a question of allowing for flexibility, recognizing that we do not know, you know, where that's going and the strength of that. So, so you know, when you, when you create parameters on use like this, you make it difficult, you create the potential for vacancy, given what we know is happening in the market, and I think none of us want that. So, you know, the, I'm just, you know, I just think as in principle, on principle, we should be encouraging flexibility, particularly on side streets, and not on avenues, you know, more comfortable if this were on an avenue as opposed to a side street.
But I, I think it's a pretty active street, retail-wise. I mean, the problem is, you know, if you allow flexibility, it will immediately default to residential. There's no question that that will happen.
And, but I guess the question is, is if that's what it wants to be, you know, and it's a side street, and, and we see that the trend is going in that direction, why would we try to regulate a use that doesn't seem to make sense anymore?
Well, we're trying to prevent deregulation rather than adding a regulation, I guess, but.
I, I think that, that might be a point that we want to maintain here, is that we actually, this is a, a manufacturing zone that allows residential through a special action. Right? And so I, 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 I think that the department was somewhat agnostic about the actual ground floor, although noted, like, as, as Anthony said, that, that, that this is a street with active ground-floor retail. But, 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 but we're, we're, we're allowing flexibility by just allowing the residential, and even though it's through somewhat ownerless action.
I, I, I'm assuming that these are all market rate, there won't be any affordability in any of this residential.
That's correct.
Yeah, Anthony's not into it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we can hope, yes.
I appreciate that, Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. I, I know it wasn't shown on this slide presentation, but I'm looking in our briefing pack, and I'm looking at the first floor plan, that's the drawing wise. That it shows like a residential layout for the ground floor. So is there a revised plan that they're going to submit? A DC is called DCP dash oh four is what I'm looking at in terms of the plans within the briefing package that we have. So if you could just confirm with them and just have them.
Yeah. Anthony, is that, is that a vestige of a prior, a, a submission? We might, we might need to update that. I don't know.
Yeah, it, it might be.
Okay, we'll, we'll circulate then the, the revised before the vote. Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner. Other discussion. This is not an item that requires a public vote after having provided the revised plan.
All right, moving on. The fifth item on our agenda is a scope determination of a city council modification for the Governor's Island rezoning. Here to present is Allison Brown.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The Governor's Island text and map amendment was approved by the City Planning Commission on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. The City Council Land Use Committee voted on amendments to the text on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. So today I will share the proposed City Council Land Use Amendments for the commission's consideration. Next slide, please. City Council proposes a number of modifications listed here, which I will describe in detail in the following slides. Next slide, please. First, the overall FAR in the South Island Subdistrict would be reduced to two point six-three or approximately three million seven hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, where two point nine eight FAR or four million two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet was previously approved. Structures in the open space subarea, previously considered exempt from floor area, will now be considered floor area and will count against the South Island's overall maximum zoning floor area cap. All commercial uses will be reduced to an FAR of two or approximately two million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet, and hotel use will be further reduced to an FAR of point three one three or approximately five hundred thousand square feet. Community facilities will be reduced to two point six-three FAR, although ambulatory diagnostic or treatment healthcare facilities will be limited to two FAR similar to commercial uses. Finally, motel and motel uses will no longer be permitted in the South Island Subdistrict. Next slide, please. Maximum heights of all buildings are being lowered across the South Island. On E one, the maximum building height will be reduced from two hundred and thirty feet to a hundred and twenty-five feet. On E two, we reduced from two hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five feet. On E three, from two hundred feet to a hundred and seventy-five feet. And finally, on E four, from two hundred feet to a hundred and twenty-five feet. On the western parcel, on W one, the maximum height will be reduced from two hundred feet, will be reduced to two hundred feet, a reduction from two hundred and fifty feet. To note, City Council also proposes a non-substantive conforming change to the text, where the maximum lot coverage locations were adjusted from seventy-five feet to sixty feet to match base height revisions made by the applicant during the ULEUR process. Next slide, please. Finally, underlying bicycle parking regulations are applied to all applicable uses in the underlying text, but also to all island uses not otherwise contemplated by the underlying text. This text modification will ensure ample bicycle parking for an island that focuses on non-vehicular transportation. Next slide, please. So thank you very much, and the City Council will have a stated meeting on May twenty-seventh, and I can now answer any questions.
And to state the obvious, we have determined that all of the modifications are within scope, place your knuckles.
Yes, Allison, thank you. Could you just restate the lot reduction of lot coverage modification?
Sure. So it's, it's not a reduction in lot coverage, but where the threshold of lot coverage is measured. So previously, we had measured different lot coverages at different levels above the base, when the base was measured at seventy-five feet. During the ULEUR process, the applicant lowered the base heights of almost all buildings to sixty feet. So accordingly, City Council revised that base, that lot, lot coverage measurement to match the new base heights. So it's, it's really almost a cleanup item that we didn't catch previously when we were making subsequent revisions to the text following that base height change.
Let me see. I'm just curious. Not that it would, you know, necessarily impact the outcome here, but do you have any response from the applicant on these modifications that, that the council is imposing?
Um, I mean, the applicant is in agreement with the Department of City Planning that all of these changes are certainly within scope. And, you know, as I suggested, a lot of these changes are, you know, such as proposing bicycle parking are things that, you know, are of importance to the trust. So I, I didn't hear anything from the applicant as to that these were not, you know, good changes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then I will ask for an ascend by show of hands to send a letter to the City Council noting that these changes are within scope. Great, and we look forward to the final vote approving this initiative. Thank you, Allison.
Okay, the sixth item on our agenda is a scope determination of a city council modification for four thirty-one Concord Avenue. The council proposes to eliminate the mandatory inclusion, inclusionary housing option two, leaving only option one. Staff believe this modification is within scope. I also just want to note for the record that Commissioner Raffin shot is accused of this.
Hey, I will ask again for an ascend by show of hands and the scope determination to the council. Okay, thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda is a scope determination of a city council modification for Sudam Street rezoning. The council proposes to eliminate mandatory inclusionary housing option two and add the deep affordability option. Staff believe that this modification is within scope.
So again, I will ask for a ascend by show of hands to send a scope determination to the council. Thank you.
The eighth item on our agenda is a referral of a citywide text amendment. Our presenter is Jacqueline Sun Woo.
And I'll note before Jackie begins the presentation that we are so pleased to have the opportunity to update sections of the zoning items that we had been working on, but that have been given new urgency, given the pandemic. So over to you, Jackie.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jackie Sun Woo, and I'm the lead project manager for the Fresh Update zoning amendment. I'm joined by Barry Dinnerstein, Deputy Director of Housing and Economic Development Division here at City Planning. So after the presentation, him and I will help answer some of your questions. Next slide, please. So FRESH, which stands for Food Retail Expansion to Support Health, is an existing program in the zoning resolution that was created in two thousand nine. This proposed text amendment is an update to this existing program. FRESH aims to encourage more supermarkets in underserved areas of the city and to increase accessibility to fresh foods. Also, the recent pandemic highlighted the importance of having supermarkets nearby more than ever. So as part of the department's broader goals for recovery, this update aims to help speed such econ, economic recovery from the pandemic and to ensure that neighbors have good access to fresh foods. So I'll start with a bit of background and then move on to the updates that we're proposing. Next slide, please. In two thousand eight, City Planning released a study called Going to Market that highlighted a widespread shortage of neighborhood grocery stores and limited food options in several communities. The study also found that in many of these places, pharmacies, convenience stores, and discount stores are the largest segment of food retailers, but they don't typically sell fresh products. So as a result, FRESH was created to encourage more construction of supermarkets. Around two thousand sixteen, the mayor's office and city council urged City Planning to expand FRESH into more areas and held a hearing in two thousand eighteen to assess the program. Many council members, as well as operators, developers, and the general public voiced their concerns and provided feedback during this hearing. So in an effort to improve FRESH and to respond to the public's request, City Planning began further analyses for potential updates and started developing the proposal. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, FRESH was adopted in two thousand nine, and the program has two components to it. One is a discretionary tax incentives program thus managed by NYCEDC, and there's a zoning component which is managed by us at City Planning. What the map here on this slide is showing you is where these programs are eligible. So in gray are where discretionary tax incentives apply, and green is where the zoning incentives apply. And there are areas where both of these programs are eligible, which is illustrated in dark green. The discretionary tax incentives program provides tax breaks for supermarket operators and developers seeking to build or renovate new retail spaces. But more relevant for this proposal here today, FRESH zoning is a certification process by the Chair of the City Planning Commission, and it provides one reallocated residential square feet for every square footage of a fresh food store up to twenty thousand square feet. An applicant can also apply for a fifteen-feet additional height to absorb the additional floor area, but this actually makes it into an authorization process. So the difference between a certification and an authorization is that an authorization requires CPC approval, whereas a certification would be a non-discretionary action by the chairperson only. And in light manufacturing or M one districts, a fresh store can build as a right up to thirty thousand square feet, whereas currently the as-of-right square footage for a food store in M one districts are ten thousand square feet. And lastly, an applicant can receive some parking relief with the FRESH program depending on which district the project is located in. Next slide, please. So since the adoption of FRESH, there are now twenty-seven certified FRESH projects citywide. Out of these eight are now occupied by a supermarket operator. We've definitely seen more projects and interest recently, and as you can see in this map, more projects have taken advantage of the program in some parts of Brooklyn and in northern Manhattan. So in two thousand eighteen, when we began assessing FRESH, we reviewed the supermarket landscape across New York City again and updated the supermarket needs index. Next slide, please. So supermarket needs index, or what we, City Planning call SNI, is a metric that we came up with to analyze the need for grocery stores across the city. On the map on this slide shows you the updated SNI, which combined four different variables such as walking distance, car ownership rate, families living in poverty, and trade area. And what our analysis showed was that many of the neighborhoods outside of the existing FRESH boundary, which is illustrated in green here, still remain underserved by fresh food stores. Our conversation with stakeholders and the general public also illustrated that an expansion of the program may benefit some of these areas. And you can see the dark gray areas are where we identified as high-needs neighborhoods. So while we understand that FRESH can't be a one-and-all solution per se, we are hoping that it will contribute to more New Yorkers to live within a comfortable walking distance to a store in their neighborhoods. We're also hoping that this expansion may provide more affordable options due to increased competition and empower more consumers with better options and access. Next slide, please. Um, along with our own analyses, there's been citywide efforts to improve food equity, including the mayor's ten-year food policy plan, which recommends expanding food benefits to reach more New Yorkers in more places and greater access to healthy, affordable foods. All New Yorkers deserve to live within a comfortable walking distance from a food store and to have choices about where to shop. So grocery stores are a fundamental component of neighborhoods, and the COVID pandemic made us realize this fact even more. So expansion and improvement of the FRESH program will not only help speed the city's recovery from the pandemic, but it will meet the needs of communities that have already been struggling as food deserts. Next slide, please. So the main updates we're proposing are, one, an expansion of this FRESH boundary into some of the high-need areas that you saw. We also are proposing to include a mechanism to prevent concentration of fresh supermarkets and proposing modifications to the glazing requirement for conversions and parking requirements to provide greater relief. I will also explain a few of the clarifications of the zoning texts we're making based on public feedback. Now I will go through these one by one now. Next slide, please. So first, we're proposing to expand FRESH into the four boroughs except for Manhattan in a total of eleven community districts. So the map here is showing you, and solid green is where fresh zoning incentives already apply, and the hatch green is where we're proposing to expand into, and these are listed on the table to your left as well. So the ones that are mapped here are the only community districts that will be affected by the proposal. And these boundaries are based on the updated SNI that you saw, as well as the city's overall land use policy goals in each of the borough and neighborhood. Next slide, please. Another big update to the FRESH program is a mechanism to prevent concentration of fresh supermarkets in applicable areas. So to take a step back and put it into context, we currently have twenty-seven approved FRESH projects as of February of this year. And out of these, around fifteen to seventeen are actually in what we define as best, best eye neighborhood in Brooklyn, including community district three and four. On the Brooklyn office, as well as the community, have voiced their concerns about this, mostly because a concentration of fresh stores could potentially run existing supermarkets out of business and incentivize buildings that are bigger than what the underlying zoning permits. So in a nutshell, what we're proposing is that the So in a nutshell, what we're proposing is that the reallocated residential floor area within a half-mile distance to be kept at 40,000 square feet. And what this means is that essentially, within a half-mile radius, there would only be 220,000 square feet large fresh supermarkets allowed, assuming that they take full advantage of the reallocated residential FAR. So while we understand that this can't completely stop or discourage a supermarket from going into a neighborhood, it is a way for us to preemptively control over building of supermarkets and unanticipated bigger buildings than what is typically allowed. Next slide, please. And thirdly, we will be removing the glazing or transparency requirement for conversion projects only. The current provision requires that 50% of the ground floor surface area to be transparent. But we've actually been told that this requirement is too costly and difficult to meet for conversion projects. So we will be removing this rule for conversions only, but new buildings will still have to meet this 50% requirement. And waiving glazing for conversion projects is actually consistent with what we do for conversion and other parts of the zoning resolution. Next slide, please. We're also modifying parking rules because with the proposed expansion, FRESH now includes more lower-density residential districts. So currently, FRESH eases parking rules by requiring one parking space per 1,000 square feet of commercial floor area in most of the districts. But since we now have more lower-density residential districts as part of the program, in R3 through R5 districts, FRESH will require one space for 400 square feet of supermarket floor area with a 25-space waiver, and any excess floor area will have to follow the underlying zoning requirement. Next slide, please. And what I have listed here are some of the other clarifications and modifications we are making to the zoning text to make the application process for FRESH a little easier. So one, we want to clarify the definition of what a fresh store is. So currently, the minimum requirement of a fresh store is that it is 6,000 square feet. We want to clarify in the text that the 6,000 square feet of selling area must be contiguous and located on the same floor. This is to ensure that a good portion of the supermarket is actually guaranteed for good access. We're also trying to redefine the distribution of perishable and non-perishable goods within the supermarket to provide more flexibility. We've been told from applicants that the current requirement to have 80% of selling area be food is really difficult to meet. So we will be modifying this to be 60% of selling area to be food, leaving 40% as flex space for operators to decide. We're also changing the rules for the restrictive declaration. So right now, all FRESH projects are required to have a restrictive declaration, which basically is a legal agreement to have a supermarket in place in perpetuity. But this requirement could make the application process a bit more arduous. So we will not be asking this of FRESH projects that do not increase their residential floor area. And our reasoning behind that is that if a food store is already on as-of-right use in the building and it's not bigger than what the zoning permits, there's no need to require this legal agreement. Next slide, please. So after today's review session, the text memo will be referred out to the relevant community boards. And that concludes my presentation on FRESH. Thank you very much, and we're happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Jackie. Commissioner, please.
Hi. Thank you, Jackie. I have a question. The new parking requirements amount to 2.5 spaces per 1,000 square feet. Where does that threshold come from? You know, what has determined that that's the right requirement versus being higher or lower?
Hi, that's Barry Dinnerstein. The requirement is the same as a C13 requirement. So we're following the existing requirements in the zoning resolution, actually slightly lower than what is typical for a food store and is typical what we would map in a commercial district, in a lower-density district.
Okay, do we know anything about utilization? I asked the question because, you know, it's come up at times that requirements at 2.5 per thousand, not for groceries, so I acknowledge that that might be a different animal, but for retail destinations like, you know, in the Bronx, the, oh, gosh, what's the large big box?
Bronx Terminal Market.
Bronx Terminal Market, thank you. Similar parking requirement, and they're about 50% utilized. So I'm just, you know, curious as to whether we know whether, you know, that has changed, the demand has changed, and whether we're requiring more parking than might be necessary.
So what our thinking is here is that there's a 25-space waiver, which comes out to 10,000 square feet. So basically, a small to moderate grocery store would not have to provide parking. The concern is, is in the lower-density districts, that the density of population there is not so great that it would be hard for larger stores to support a lot of square footage without having parking, because they need to draw people from a larger area. There just aren't enough people within walking distance. So the idea is, as the stores get bigger, we would require them to provide a certain amount of parking, which, you know, by industry standards is actually kind of low. But, you know, most of our, you know, we would expect that a lot of the fresh stores would be relatively small and probably would wave out of the parking. So we think it will work. You know, obviously, there are going to be concerns in some communities that we're lowering the parking requirement. And so we're trying to thread a needle here by requiring less parking, but not so much that people are concerned that it's unworkable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, on the 40,000 square feet within a half a mile, that's not limited to 220,000. That could be a combination of 315,000 or whatever, 12,000 and so forth?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. And then another question. Has there been any thought to expanding to 20,000 to a little higher number? I've done some research lately, and some, I will not name them, some supermarkets require a minimum 22,000 square foot footprint to look at a location. So perhaps we're discouraging by sticking it at 20,000, where for a few thousand feet more, we might encourage more entrance into the space. Has there been any thought to expanding it?
So if I'm understanding your, yeah, and then you can add to it, Barry. If I'm, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly, too, here. So the 20,000 square feet is actually just a cap on the reallocated residential floor area. It doesn't limit the supermarket itself from being over 20,000 square feet. So that cap is actually there in order for us to manage the additional square footage that's going in the building.
To 20,000 is also the maximum zoning bonus, correct?
Yes, that's what I meant. That's a cap to the bonus.
Correct. So my question, I understand that it doesn't limit the size of the supermarket, but if there are a few thousand square feet more, we might encourage more entrance into this field. So have we done a study on supermarket sizes, on the current players, the minimum size requirements that they want?
So a couple of things is, you know, the typical FRESH project, and we have 28 of them. I think the average is between 12,000 and 13,000 square feet. So the typical project doesn't even come close to the full 20,000 square feet. Second is that, you know, as you get bigger, it will be harder and harder to fit the additional floor area within the envelope. And so, you know, you would have to start looking at the envelope in terms of the ability to digest all the residential floor area. And third is, you know, we are not really trying to encourage really sort of large supermarkets. We're trying to encourage, you know, small neighborhood supermarkets. So I think we're pretty comfortable with the 20,000 square foot limitation. As Jackie said, you know, there's nothing prohibiting a store from going bigger. They're just the max they would get would be 20,000. They would be able to get, you know, the parking waivers if that applies. So there is, and they were also certainly eligible for tax benefits as well. So, you know, there are incentives available to a supermarket that wants to be bigger, although we have not really seen people coming in asking, what could we do bigger? Change it? That has not come up in any of our discussions with developers or operators.
A follow-up to you, Barry, on a point you touched on. Talked about the tax benefits. I know when you and I were both on the IDA board many moons ago when this was enacted, has there been an update to the IDA program? Has it been simplified? Has the tax benefits improved? Or is it, are we still?
Well, they have made them a little bit easier to get. They lowered the threshold of store size and also increased the benefits. Unfortunately, the problem with IDA, the Industrial Development Agency Tax Abatement Program, is that it's set by state law. And the mechanism in terms of how you do it is somewhat complicated and unfortunately expensive to do. But the city really can't, the city is fairly limited in what it can do in terms of supplying the project because of what the requirements are. There is a smaller program that EDC offers that is aimed at, you know, people who do new stores or do monetization of stores where the benefits are not as deep, but they do provide, you know, some tax relief for people making improvements to their stores.
Just to clarify, so the property tax abatement from the IDA is a state program versus a city program?
Well, the regulations are set by the state. It's done through the city, through the city, but the actual, what you have to do is set by state, by state law.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ron Prashad.
Thank you for the presentation. I just had a question with regards to the definition of fresh store. And in particular, I believe you said the percentage of perishable and non-perishable was at 80%, but now you're looking to revise it to 60%? I was just curious how that was determined? And if it is going to be 60%, or is that going to be inputted under 6301? Like the exact number, 60%, so people know?
Yes. So first of all, the 60% requirement will be written in the zoning text. And mostly, our easing of the requirement of 80 to 60% came a lot from public feedback and applicants coming in, providing us feedback saying that it's a little difficult to meet. So after we got that question, we, in the beginning of the process of this proposal development, we actually went out and spoke to a lot of supermarket operators and developers to kind of make sense of what is best for the supermarket to actually lay out. And after multiple conversations, a lot of supermarket operators agreed that the 60% makes it a lot easier and is a reasonable percentage for the layout of these products.
The thing I would add to that is, one of the problems that a couple of the operators had asked us about is the way the rules were written, they were somewhat limited in terms of how much fresh product they could have versus sort of the dry product. And, you know, the store sort of said, we really want to provide more fresh product. And of course, from our perspective, we would prefer people to do fresh product as opposed to, you know, canned goods or packaged goods. And it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to us to limit, you know, the ability of people to do, you know, more fresh produce or more fresh fish or even sort of deli types of things. So as a result of that, we sort of changed the definition. We are confident that it will still only apply to people who are in supermarkets in the food business and not allow, say, drugstores or discount stores to come in and say, oh, we're really a supermarket and take advantage of the program.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to go back to the question, line of questioning that Commissioner Dweck had, because he brought up a very interesting point subsequent to the conversation. So understanding that the fresh bonus will only yield X number of extra square, bonus square footage, and if a supermarket wants to come in and have 25,000 square foot supermarket, that will be deducted from the overall building envelope and the square footage allowed for the bonus. So I got that. But Barry, you mentioned something about parking that then kind of sparked my interest. So what would happen if, in fact, a supermarket would come in and want to be above any number of square footage above what is dictated by the FRESH zoning? Would that require additional parking spots?
No. So the fresh stores will have specific requirements, requirements which are lower than the underlying parking requirement. And depending upon what district you're in, either the parking would be waived or it might be required, but you would have a lower requirement than you would if you don't use the FRESH program. If you use the FRESH.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
I have, it's not really a land use question, but I do remember when FRESH was first rolled out, I guess 10 years ago now, that some of the stores had struggled because, you know, in these sort of so-called food deserts, they were competing against all of this low-cost, high-calorific fast food. And the fresh produce was often not cheap and required time and some creativity to actually turn into a meal. And they were sort of battling that. So I'm wondering, has there been any follow-up as to how successful these are and how much of that fresh food they actually move? And I suppose with 27 certified sites, that's a good sign. But I wonder if there's, you know, how the monitoring is going and how the program's going overall.
We, you know, we've approved a lot of stores. The stores have been, in some cases, sort of slow to occupy space just because the bill and the time it takes to actually construct buildings take a long time. The industry issue is less, I think, about fast food and competing against fast food as much as that they are competing against sort of, you know, dollar stores, discount stores. And those stores sell a lot of food, but frequently don't really sell much in the way of fresh products. And so some of those stores can undercut prices in a grocery store. And so people will go there, and then they don't really have the ability to actually buy fresh product. So what we're trying to do here is, one, to encourage, you know, stores to be there and via the tax programs, provide incentives that make it a little bit cheaper for the grocery stores to operate and give them a little bit of a heads-up over the, you know, existing like discount stores, which may try to undercut them on price.
Commissioner Bernie, there's a good question in that we should add to our work program, when time permits, because we're pretty flat out now, a look at the operation of the program to get a sense of the practical reality of it.
Yeah, I seem to remember the health department was sort of monitoring it in terms of public health, there's a public health issue, and nutrition standards and so on. So it'd be interesting to see if they've looked into it.
Thank you for the suggestion. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Barry, since only one of these fresh developments have happened in Queens, I'm just wondering what has been the greatest impediment to more of these stores in Queens? And which of these modifications do you think will most effectively address that shortage in Queens?
You know, we've had, the only areas in Queens that are covered at present are the Hollis Point area, where we were very excited to get a grocery store, particularly since that grocery store is adjacent to a story of houses, where, you know, there's no food stores for very, very long distances. So that, you know, was, I think, a very important amenity for all the folks who live in the story of houses. So that, you know, was, I think, a very important amenity for all the folks who live in the story houses. The other area is Jamaica. And we've had a number of discussions with people. There've been a number of projects been proposed, but none of them have been able to, you know, get over the finish line. I think part of the issue in Jamaica is it's a very, you know, Queens is much more order oriented. A lot of people have cars and prefer to go to suburban style supermarkets. But, you know, we continue to sort of work with our partners at EDC and with Greater Jamaica to try and see if we could get a, a food store to locate certainly in downtown Jamaica. The proposed Fresh Two adds a, a number of areas in community districts three and four. Where we've had also some interested developers who want to do grocery stores. So we're optimistic we'll see more projects in Queens. Uh, once the Fresh Two is in, uh, is passed and operating.
See, Commissioner, it wants to weigh in on this.
I notice also that you've added, uh, Community Board Eight in the Bronx, which generally is, is, for the most part covers Riverdale. Where, where in that area do you think there's more fertile uh, territory for?
It, it only really adds the Broadway corridor, uh, which, some of which comes into Board Eight. And our thinking there, oh, well, first of all, it's, it's very much adjacent, very much serves the Kingsbridge neighborhood. Where, you know, you have you know, a very moderate income population, a lot of diet-related disease. And people sort of heading over to Broadway to do their grocery shopping and other shopping. And, um, what we're thinking there, and there were quite a few stores there, as, as you know. But we are concerned that over time, that some of those sites may be redeveloped. And so the reason for adding fresh there is to try and provide an incentive that if someone has a one-story grocery store and they redevelop it, that there'd be an incentive to put the grocery store back as opposed to doing something else with, uh, with this, with the retail space. So that's our sort of thinking there.
And, and to add to that, Barry, I think we had an applicant, um, who came in with the interest of fresh in that neighborhood. So that's when we initially started looking at expanding fresh into the area.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I noted that Commissioner Knight wanted to weigh in presumably on Greater Jamaica.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Barry was right, that we do see a lot of retail leakage in the grocery category going over the border. Nassau County, but there are a couple of new projects in the pipeline that we expect to apply for the fresh program.
That's encouraging. Thank you. Commissioner Eleven.
Yes, I'm struck by some of the information in our briefing packet, but that we've referred to the twenty-seven or the briefing sheet says twenty-eight projects have been approved. But somewhere else, I think I read that only eight are, oh, um, open now. Um, how many of those, and Barry, you referred to the long time it takes to develop these projects, but I'm wondering, do we also have some projects that are just never going to get occupied? Um, and what happens in that case? They've taken the bonus, built the building, can't find a tenant.
Um, well, a couple, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, we are sort of monitoring all the, the projects they are required through the zoning to sort of give us progress reports and tell us what's happening with the, with the space. We, um, you know, it, it's actually somewhat interesting. First of all, the, the retail portion of the building is absolutely the last thing people do when they do a residential building, which is fitting out the, the retail space. And I'm also told that to open a supermarket, you need like twenty-five different permits, um, which I find really quite amazing. So, you know, it is slow for stores to open. And it is taking, um, very long for what would seem to be sort of, you know, relatively small apartment buildings to get built. You know, part of that is, well, what certainly COVID slowed people down, but also, um, you know, these projects, the contractors are slower, the architects are slower, the developers have less access to capital. So the projects move, but it just takes a little bit longer for those things to be developed. To answer your question, if someone comes in and says, my building is bigger than allowed by zoning and I can't find a grocery store. The process is, is they would have to file for an authorization from the commission. So they have to come before the commission and sort of explain what they've done to try and find the grocery store. And, you know, explain, you know, what the issue is and who looked at the space and, uh, and then at the discretion of the commission, they could be allowed to rent it to another user, a, a non-supermarket user, or the commissioner, the commission could say, we'll go back and spend six more months looking for a for a supermarket.
Okay, so do we have any of the, as yet to be occupied spaces who are heading into that category?
I think that this.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Barry.
I, I think we have one where, um, they may be, uh, about to ask for the waiver, uh, although uh, I haven't heard from them in a number of months, so I, I don't know whether they're doing it or not. We had one project in Bed-Stuy where they were able to, they originally got the fresh incentives. And were able to show that the building actually complied with zoning. So, um, they did not have to come before the commission, were able to waive their fresh obligations because the, the building complied with zoning.
Okay. All right. So this, this, this preview is a process like the seven, seventy-four, seven-eighty-one, where good faith marketing effort in Soho, NoHo, which we're about to get rid of, but we better keep these skills sharpened up.
Well, you know, the, the idea of sort of saying, well, what broker did you list this store with, you know, strikes me as probably being a fair question to ask.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, that was, that was a quip more than a substantive comment.
And I would hope that we do not see the same volume.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and you're, and the, um, the measures that you're building in to deter the concentration of these stores could help to address that problem as well.
Yeah, that's clearly something that we have learned over the course of the, of the program. Other questions or comments? Then we will refer this to all affected community boards, borough boards and borough presidents for sixty days. Thank you, Jackie and Barry.
Thank you.
Okay, the ninth item on our agenda is a referral of a citywide text amendment. Uh, our presenter is Dylan Sandler.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I'm Dylan Sandler. I'm a senior planner in the Housing and Economic Development Division at the Department of City Planning. And I'm presenting the Health and Fitness Citywide Text Amendment. And I'm joined by Jennifer Gravel, Director of the Housing and Economic Development Division, who will join me in answering questions after the presentation. Next slide, please. I'll start with an overview of the proposal and then move into a discussion of background relating to zoning regulations for health and fitness facilities and the challenges that this proposal is addressing. And then I'll end with details of the proposed text amendment. Next slide. Currently, there is a Board of Standards and Appeals special permit that is required to open gyms, spas and licensed massage therapy studios almost anywhere in New York City. The process to obtain this special permit is extremely costly for businesses, both in time and money. And even if businesses wanted to apply for the special permit, they're not allowed along many local commercial streets, uh, including areas where we allow a range of other services and retail amenities. And finally, these businesses, and many of them small businesses, have been devastated by the pandemic. And we want to ensure that they have the ability to open and meet neighborhood demand for health-related amenities going forward. Next slide. The health and fitness facilities that are impacted by this proposal include a range of activities that we're all very familiar with. These include large gyms, such as Blink and Planet Fitness and other commercial chains, as well as smaller independent gyms that exist around the city. This also includes studios such as martial arts, yoga, Pilates, indoor cycling and many others. And these also encompass a range of therapeutic and wellness businesses such as spas and licensed massage therapy. Next slide, please. During the nineteen seventies, in response to concerns about commercial sex that was occurring within businesses describing themselves as health clubs or massage parlors, a special permit was created that requires health and fitness facilities to undergo criminal background checks from the Department of Investigations before they're able to receive approval to operate. And at the time that this was created, New York City did not have the wide range of commercial gyms and other fitness activities that exist today. There were some large nonprofit health clubs like the YMCA and community centers that offered exercise classes. But it was never considered at the time that this was enacted that hundreds of overwhelmingly very legitimate businesses like yoga and rock climbing gyms, uh, would need to get special permission to operate. Next slide. But things have changed quite a lot in the decades since the special permit was created. For one, there's been significant growth in the health and fitness industry and a desire from communities to have access to these amenities. And regulations around massage therapy have also changed. Massage therapists are licensed health professionals, uh, licensed by the New York State Education Department who maintain a public registry of all licensed massage therapists in New York State. Next slide. Yet these businesses continue to be uniquely regulated through zoning, placing significant burdens on small businesses. For one, the special permit is not applicable in most C-one districts around the city, meaning that gyms, spas and massage therapy are not allowed in neighborhood locations where we allow other retail and commercial uses, uh, including restaurants, laundromats and grocery stores. Typically, the special permit takes more than six months to be granted and often costs businesses in the range of thirty to fifty thousand dollars to go through the process. And finally, at a time when vacancy rates are quite high along many, uh, retail streets, we want to ensure that our zoning regulations are sufficiently flexible and allow businesses to occupy the space. And this is especially true for a class of businesses that have been growing significantly in recent years. Next slide. Over the past few decades, the special permits that have been granted for gyms and spas have been disproportionately in the Manhattan Central Business District and in portions of Western Brooklyn and Queens. And our expectation is that by making it easier to open these businesses, this will allow smaller, independent health and fitness facilities to open farther from the core of the city and serve a broader range of neighborhoods. Next slide. This proposal is consistent with recommendations of major strategic plans that the city has developed over the past several years. Both One NYC and the Small Business First reports recommended removing these special permit requirements to promote public health in communities and support small businesses. And over the last several years, the special permit requirements have been removed as parts of as parts of neighborhood zoning changes. And this proposal is expanding this policy citywide. Next slide. Businesses in the health and fitness sector have been severely impacted by the pandemic, with many businesses reducing staff or closing either temporarily or permanently. Between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, employment in fitness and recreation sectors dropped by more than sixty percent in New York City. And as the industry continues to recover, we want to ensure that zoning doesn't pose excessive barriers to prevent businesses from being able to meet demand for these services in communities. Next slide. So now I'll move on to describing the details of the proposal. The Department of City Planning is proposing to remove the Board of Standards and Appeals special permit for all gyms, spas and licensed massage therapy. This is referred to in the zoning resolution as physical culture or health establishments or PCEs. Gyms and spas would be considered commercial uses that would be allowed as of right. For smaller gyms and spas, so those that are less than ten thousand square feet, these would be allowed in all commercial and manufacturing districts, including C-one districts where gyms are mostly not allowed today. Gyms and spas that are unlimited in size, so those that are larger than ten thousand square feet in floor area would be slightly more limited in geography. Uh, these would be allowed in our highest density C-one districts, primarily in Manhattan, as well as C-two districts and higher and manufacturing districts. And this distinction between uses that are smaller than ten thousand square feet and those that are larger is consistent with the way that other commercial uses are treated in zoning, such as clothing stores or furniture stores. Next slide. Licensed massage therapy will be treated in the same way as other outpatient medical uses in zoning. So this would be categorized as either ambulatory healthcare or healthcare offices. And this would allow licensed massage therapy studios as community facilities. So they would be permitted in most residential districts with the exception of our low-density R-one and R-two districts, as well as commercial and manufacturing districts. And it's important to note here that massage is illegal to practice without a license. And a business that offers massage by somebody who is unlicensed will continue to not be allowed, um, either as a principal or an accessory use anywhere in New York City, according to the proposed zoning. Next slide. When the BSA reviews applications for gyms, they occasionally impose conditions to address community concerns about noise and vibration that can result from activities such as dropping weights or using exercise equipment in unison. To continue to address this concern, the proposal will also include an additional performance standard for noise and vibration. So a subset of higher intensity or higher impact gyms will need to have a licensed acoustical engineer certify with the Department of Buildings that the facility is designed to meet these performance standards before they can receive a certificate of occupancy. These provisions would apply in all mixed-use buildings in commercial and mixed-use districts. And the lower, lower impact facilities such as yoga or youth martial arts, i- isometric exercise and spas would not need to demonstrate compliance with these additional noise and vibration standards, uh, but would still be subject to the New York City Noise Code. Next slide, please. So I'm going to walk through three maps describing the impact of the proposal. So first, looking at, um, the impacts for smaller gyms and spas. The area in orange shows the locations where these are allowed today with a Board of Standards and Appeals special permit. And under the proposal, these would all be allowed as of right. The area in blue, which is, uh, fairly small on, at the scale, shows the locations where within certain special districts where gyms and spas are allowed as of right today. And they would continue to be allowed as a right under this proposal. So these include places like the northern portion of Governor's Island, Inwood, Coney Island, Jerome Avenue and a handful of others. And in purple are the C-one districts, the, the C-one overlays, which exist all around the city and appear as pretty faint lines on these maps. And these are areas where, uh, gyms and spas are not allowed today, even with a special permit. But this proposal would permit smaller gyms and spas as of right. Next slide. So this map shows the implications for gyms and spas unlimited in size. And it's essentially identical to the last map with the exception that the C-one districts would not permit gyms greater than ten thousand square feet. So uh, in those, in those local C-one districts around the city, uh, gyms would be limited to ten thousand square feet. Next slide. And for a massage therapy, again, the orange area shows the geography where the existing special permit, um, applies. So massage therapy is allowed today with a special permit. And under the proposal would be allowed as of right. And the area in purple shows the remaining commercial areas and the residential districts that would permit licensed massage therapy as an ambulatory healthcare use. Next slide. So thank you very much for your time and I'd be happy to take any questions from the commission.
Thanks for that presentation, Dylan, and Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Um, I'm just wondering, where you indicated, uh, that except for R one and R two districts, um, a physical therapy, uh, unit would be, would be as of right. So we're talking R threes, R fours, uh, you know, R fives, uh, As where you have um, one and two family and, and, uh, in, in many cases, small apartment buildings. But the areas are exclusively residential. Except where you have in some cases like daycare facilities and things like that. I'm just wondering about the compatibility of, um, the physical therapy uh, usages in neighborhoods like that.
Yeah, yeah. So under the existing zoning, um, ambulatory healthcare is use group four and is allowed in, in all of those districts. So whether that's a, you know, a dentist office, a therapy office or, uh, physical therapy, um, those are all allowed as of right in, in all of those districts. Under, the, the zoning today has an exception where it basically says that um, physical culture, health establishments cannot be included as ambulatory care, which is the reason that licensed massage therapy, even though it's, um, also a, a licensed health professional is not included in that category. Um, so, and, and so, for example, if a licensed massage therapist is practicing within a physical therapy office or within a doctor's office today, that would be permitted in, in, in our four district and our five district and, and so on. Um, so, so the, the only difference here is that we would be, because massage therapy uh, is a licensed health professional, um, licensed by the state of New York, uh, we think it, it complies with, with the, the intent of the ambulatory healthcare definition and, and we see it as appropriate to in, include in that category.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, um, more, more a comment than a question. I am excited to see this. Um, I think this is really an important uh, and long overdue acknowledgement of changing conditions. You know, the, the approval process once made sense. It, it, it served its purpose at a very particular moment in time. Um, and it's been a long time since we've needed it. Um, and it has hurt, you know, many, uh, commercial districts and, and and property owners, developers, um, looking to create a balanced mix of offerings in communities. So um, I just want to applaud the department for moving forward with this, um, initiative.
Thank you. You're right. It's been a long time coming. Commissioner Bernie.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Dylan. Yeah, I, I can certainly see the, the benefits and the logic of doing this, but you do speak as though, you know, the days of licensed massage therapy being a a euphemism for prostitution and sex trafficking, uh, to be behind us. And I'm not entirely convinced about that. I mean, in my neighborhood, I've got a couple of locations of which I'm deeply suspicious. So I wonder, you know, what measures are we taking to make sure that we're not encouraging a return to that type of activity that we really don't want to see?
Yeah. So, so I guess I'll, I'll start by saying we've been coordinating very closely with the mayor's office to end gender based violence that, um, really are the lead agency dealing with uh, sex trafficking, human trafficking and labor trafficking. Um, and, and also with the mayor's office of special enforcement that, that deal with, uh, enforcement related to, um, related to commercial sex. And so under the existing framework, businesses that are, are offering massage or, or body rubs or reflexology or, you know, other terminology that that kind of relates to massage and, um, do not have a physical culture or health establishment special permit can be issued a, a zoning violation. Um, and, and that is a useful civil enforcement tool, um, that, that the city does use, um, where they suspect a business of engaging in, in commercial sex under, under the guise of, you know, using, using language like massage. Under the zoning, we, we have included a, you know, we, we've made it explicit that unlicensed massage is not a permitted use, um, as a principal or an accessory use anywhere in the city. Um, so even though we are removing the special permit, if, if the Office of Special Enforcement, uh, believes that, um, an, an organization is engaging in commercial sex, uh, they are able to see if the, if the organization has a licensed massage therapist um, working and, and if they do not, they can still issue a zoning violation uh, and use that as a civil enforcement tool. So, so we believe we're, we're not actually removing, um, and, and I should say, we and, and the Office of Special Enforcement and Department of Buildings believe we're not actually removing the, the city's ability to address commercial sex within businesses saying they are offering massage or other health related, um, uses. Um, but we are removing significant burdens for very legitimate businesses.
Okay. Well, let's just hope we monitor it and make sure we don't have bad things happening. Thanks.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz.
I guess just a clarification. Sex work remains illegal, correct? I mean, zoning isn't the only tool that we have at our disposal to address some of the issues raised by Commissioner Bernie.
Yes, so sex work is, is illegal, um, and, uh, unlicensed massage is, is also illegal in the state of New York, practicing massage without, without a license from New York State. Um, and, and so tho- those are, are avenues for enforcement. In historically, and, and I think today, uh, zoning has provided a civil enforcement tool. So rather than, rather than going after people who are, who are offering commercial sex, zoning provides an opportunity to, to issue a violation against the business that is engaging in that activity. Um, and, and in some cases that is, you know, that is preferable from, from the side of, of, of the city's enforcement of, of commercial sex. And, and so, so we've maintained both, we've maintained that civil enforcement, uh, mechanism. Um, but, but you're exactly right that commercial sexes is not, is not legal, um, as, as well as unlicensed massage.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
I have a much more mundane question, and that is whether the, um, floor area calculations here, the limits on size. Do they count below grade of space? Because you frequently see these larger gyms have a small space at street level and then occupying a large basement space. And in fact, that's a pretty good use of some, um, hard to tenant.
Right.
Subterranean commercial spaces.
So that, so they do not. So it's, it's defined as ten thousand square feet in floor area. Um, and, and the idea is we wanted to encourage, you know, walkable spaces with, with kind of active street frontages, but, but agree that, uh, you know, using basement or, or cellar space for, for gyms and, and fitness facilities seems like a very good use of, of space. It's very common in the industry and, and also from the standpoint of addressing noise and vibration impacts. It's, it's a good location in a building to have those kinds of activities. So, so that, that would not count.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for this, this session and not seeing other raised hands. We will refer out the zoning text amendment to all affected community boards, borough boards and borough presidents for sixty days. And Ryan, I believe that that is the end of our special review session.
This is the end of our special review session of, uh, Wednesday, May nineteenth. The time is twelve oh two PM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you to the commissioners for indulging us with this, um, marathon certifying, exciting.
Enjoy the beautiful weather today.